Sign.
We have public spirit anyway.
Okay. Call me to the North Reading School Committee to order for September 23rd. First order of business, public input. Seeing no one from the general public here, we will pass on to the next piece of business, which is our student report tonight, our first report for the 2013-14 school year. And we have Senior Matt Layton with us. Welcome back, Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Webster.
That must be someone calling that's watching you on TV. They want to. Go ahead.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Webster. This past Friday, the boys' football team defeated Hamilton Wedham sixteen to zero in their first home game of the season, improving their record to two and oh. Their next game is Friday night up in Newburyport. And Mr. Veneti and I were just talking, it should be a good game, so we're looking forward to that. Before the game on Friday, Student Council and the Music Boosters hosted a tailgating event. There was food, raffles, and T-shirts for sale. From the feedback I got, it was a lot of fun, kids had a great time, and they hope to do another one in the near future. This year, Student Council is holding a raffle for VIP seats to the Thanksgiving Day game. We found this very interesting during the meeting today. You can buy one ticket for three dollars, two for five, or an arm's length for ten. If you win, you'll be seated on a couch on the sideline of the Thanksgiving Day game, having food delivered to you and having multiple blankets to keep warm.
How much are the tickets again?
It's three, it's three dollars for two.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, one for three, two for five, or an arm's length for ten.
An arm's length for ten. I'll have to find someone tall.
This was like a mistake, you should do two for seven.
Yeah, Mrs. Willis said she is purchasing at the next meeting when they bring them, so.
Wow.
Our school, I mean, our, I'm sorry, our Student Council Chair will be attending, and I'm sure she's going to bring a whole roll of tickets.
Yes.
When she attends.
At the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Today, freshman class officers, nomination forms are due. Speeches and elections will be held on Monday, and for the first time, there will be campaigning allowed. Students are allowed to create posters but not copy them, with only positive messages. There are many rules and restrictions to this, but the Student Council is very excited that they're allowing students to do this for the first time. On October 11th, Dollars for Scholars is hosting a hypnotist's presentation. Last year, Mr. Bernard was hypnotized. Now here is very fun to see him hypnotize up there, and hopefully he'll do it again this year.
I don't think they brought him back.
I don't know.
See, I was thinking the same exact thing, Jay, but I wasn't going to say it, so.
SLAM, the Student Leadership Mentoring Program, has held two mentoring sessions this year, along with their cookout, which was held in August. On Wednesday night, the girls' soccer team is hosting a breast cancer awareness night in memory of Mrs. Valenti, who passed away a few weeks ago. In sports today, the soccer team hosted Triton, but we came out with a three-two loss. The girls, on the other hand, traveled up to Triton, and they came up with a two-two tie. Girls volleyball played Marblehead on Friday night, and they came out with a win, improving their record to four and three. The golf team is having a very excellent season, having a record of five and one, and standing in third place in the division. Field hockey had a game last Wednesday against Penn Tucket, and they came out with a tie. The boys and girls cross-country team both have a record of two and two, and they're doing very well. We have half-days on Thursday for NEASC and on Friday for teacher development. For student work, I was talking to Mrs. Willis earlier, and I just wanted to talk about the student parking lot situation. It's been, there's been a lot of talk around the town regarding the situation. I can tell you that, at the end of summer, a lot of seniors specifically were very upset that they did not receive a permit. When an email went back out in the early of the summer, it said seniors would be given priority, but that wasn't the case, so many were upset about that. But as the days went on, as the week progressed, we've, students got the hang of it, they found alternate rides to school. And I can say, so far, it's worked out very well this year. I've seen a lot of carpooling going on, and people taking opportunity to free busing. People have been on the waiting list. There's been a lot of people slashing the waiting list, so they've got their permits. So, all in all, I think it's sad to see the student parking lot go, but I think it's a great, it's turning out to be a better situation than what we all hoped it would be.
So, are you driving to school?
I am.
You are. I have a question, initially for Kathy. Matt said that people have been removed from the waiting list, so we were able to find more spaces. Is that because we reoriented that new parking lot?
We have not opened the new parking lot yet, but we did reorient the small one.
The small one, the small new one on the access road up to the main entrance of the high school?
Yes, and as the faculty and the students returned, Mr. Bernard assessed the situation to see how many free spaces were in fact left open. So they've designated fewer spaces for visitors so that more of the faculty and the students can park. So we've added more parking for our students, and we anticipate that the parking on the student parking lot side near the wastewater treatment plant construction will be opening up in the not-too-distant future, and that will add even more spaces, allowing more students to park.
So it'll be open before the Thanksgiving football game?
That is the intent.
Because even, you were there Friday night.
I was.
Parking was difficult Friday night. It was a good crowd, but it wasn't.
It was a decent crowd, but it won't be a Thanksgiving crowd, that's for sure.
No, and for Thanksgiving, there will be other, I would say, processes that will be put into place. We will be having a shuttle bus. Now, the high school had an open house, I think, last week as well, and a shuttle bus was provided from the middle school parking lot down to the high school.
Oh, good idea.
And it worked out very well. Parents were very appreciative that that shuttle was functioning.
That's a good idea.
So I met with Mr. Bernard, and he said that was a very big success. So we'll need larger-than-a-shuttle bus, I believe, on Thanksgiving Day, but we'll make sure that we're using the high schoo, the middle school parking for overflow.
Now, one other thing I noticed, there are cars being parked on what used to be the old practice field. Was that always in the plan, to park cars there? Because I haven't seen any issues yet, but it's kind of a safety thing, because you get a lot of people walking through there during after-school events and cars backing in and out of there. So I was just wondering if that'll change when the new parking lots open on the other side?
It will change when winter comes, because that will not be able to be plowed. But initially, that was not part of the plan.
Right.
And then, when additional space was needed over on the side of the wastewater treatment plant construction, we needed to find additional parking, so that the professionals were the ones that came up with that plan. It's fully vetted, and it was lined at the beginning of the school year for parking. There were additional personnel out there directing the students. I've asked Mr. Bernard how that's going, he said the students have the hang of it now, and so they are intending to continue to use that as a temporary stopgap until the parking opens up on the side of the wastewater treatment. And then Mr. Bernard is in the process of figuring out who will park on the side of wastewater treatment. It's looking like that will be, you know, the faculty's side, but those details are still being worked out.
They won't be allowed to park on that grass field, other than schooltime. So like, if there's a game, or like, the high school back-to-school night, you're not allowed to park there, they'll.
Are they blocking it off?
Yes.
Okay, good, because I don't think I saw it to be parked out there for the football game. Right behind the stands where the old practice field is?
Oh.
They're allowing cars to be parked there during the, during the day?
My only thing is, I'm sure Mr. Bernard had a lot of considerations when he was making the decision, but I agree with Matt, I would have liked to have seen seniors getting preference. I think it was more first come, first served type of thing.
That's what I.
I don't know, but, you know, it just.
We sold out of permits on the first day.
Yeah.
The very first, four days were allowed, and they were gone by the first day.
Yeah.
Do you know how many are on the waiting list now?
I know, I do not.
Okay.
I think there are about seven seniors left on the waiting list, and the rest are juniors. There are no sophomores that received passes.
Right.
Or are on the waiting list. There were some rumors going around that sophomores got passes, and that's not true.
Okay. But hopefully, maybe we will have additional space, you don't know, once that new parking lot opens on the other side.
That's correct. That's correct. There are about nine students taking advantage of the free busing, and that includes the siblings of some of those that would have driven to school.
Okay. All right. Sorry, Matt.
That's all right.
Any questions for Matt? All right, great, thanks. Have a good school year.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right. Okay, next, this rolls right into the parking, we'll go right into the MSBA SSBC update. Kathy?
Thank you. The last secondary school building committee was held on September 10th, beginning at 5:30 PM. Just briefly, and even since I wrote this update for you, so much has changed. That site is changing daily. In my update, I said that the exterior work was beginning shortly, and it's already well underway. In fact, you can view the three different shades of brick as they're going up on the right-hand side of Building A, which is the high school academic wing, if you view it from the current parking lot in the front of the high school. It is absolutely beautiful. On the interior, the stairwells are being finished, which really gives you a sense of what the building will look like. The masons are working, or they're well underway in the gym and the cafeteria. The roof on Building A is complete. Work is underway on the roof over the auditorium, which will be followed by the media center. That may already be underway. The concrete slab is, has been poured everywhere, so we have all of our concrete in. And the design right now is focused on cable connectivity, technology, and the beginning of the abventive process. Mr. Bowles, did you want to add something about construction?
Yeah, it's everywhere except the gym.
The gym.
Everywhere except the gym, correct. Chairman Karucci met with residents of PBD Court and discussed the construction of a fence to mitigate some of the dust and the noise that's taking place as a result of the construction of the wastewater treatment plant. The SSBC reviewed invoices and approved them. They also reviewed additional service requests and engaged in a discussion about the nature of change orders, and an article on this subject was distributed to the group by our OPM. A new construction newsletter has been written by Gil Bain, and it was launched last Thursday, September 19th. It will be uploaded to the district website and the SSBC website. This is going to be a regular feature, and you can see a copy of this one-page newsletter in your packet. I believe it's the first page after your notes, and it's just called North Reading Middle School High School Construction Update. It's also sent out via email to the parents of students in the district. And let's see. The next SSBC meeting is scheduled for tomorrow, Tuesday, September 24th, beginning at 6:30 PM in the high school modular cafeteria. Mr. Veneti, as you know, is a representative from the school committee to the SSBC. Mr. Veneti, or is there anything else that you'd like to add?
No, that, I think that summarizes it pretty well. The, as you said, the brick's going up pretty rapidly now on A Building. I believe Cliff, that they're going to move to B Building next, the auditorium area. It looked to me like they actually had bricks set up there, and we're getting ready to start on two fronts, I think. But, no, everything's moving along well. Let's see. I know Cliff and Janine took a walkthrough on Thursday. I happened to be up there and took one on Saturday, and there's a lot of progress being made. You can really see things shaping up, the auditorium, the seating in the auditorium, which, which again, apparently there's more seats in a row than I counted on, but it looks like it's all really coming together. And as Cliff pointed out, the only area that we don't have the slab in is the physical education area, and I'm not sure when that's going to be done, but I think it's relatively soon they'll be pouring that. Inside, they're studying the walls. They're putting the block up to define the hallways. They're getting, they're bringing the plumbing in for the bathrooms. They've got the HVAC starting to be hung. So the inside, you can't see that obviously, but the inside is really starting to develop. As the superintendent said, the, one of the stairwells is already in, which surprised me, and I think they're getting ready to put in the other one. The one at the far end of the building is in, and they're going to start with the other side. So it's pretty exciting. They, they did a lot of work on Saturday, and I think they're trying to pick up time and make sure that we're on schedule, and they had a lot of people working on Saturday, which surprised me up there.
One question on Saturdays. I know that that's been approved already by the town, but is that going to be something that will be, come out of the contingency fee for extra costs?
I don't think so, Mel. I think when they buy these contracts, the subcontractors.
They're committed to get things done at a certain time.
They're committed to get the job done, and it's all built into the contract. So I think unless we get to a point where we're forcing overtime somehow, that this is all part of this, that they're.
That could happen at some point, where we say, you have to work more hours on Saturday, whatever. That could happen, but this, this is just part of the contract.
But yeah, I was impressed by the number of people that were working up there on Saturday, and how much they were getting done, so.
Good. There's a, an interesting thing is that we're, in the last schedule update for the past month, we're showing that we're, we were about fourteen days behind, and that was principally related to masons.
Right.
Activity. Masons are working now Saturdays to catch up.
Yep.
Because it was their problem to deal with. And they've increased their staff from twenty masons last Friday to thirty masons today.
Okay.
That's a.
That's a big change.
Pretty big jump.
Yeah, fifty percent increase, yeah. Do we, and the plan is to hopefully have everything closed in by the end of December? Or is that, not with the roofs on and everything, but I mean.
The mason's really responsible, correct me if I'm wrong, Cliff, for essentially winterizing, or closing in the building so that they can continue to put the brick up. So I think he's going to try to get as much done as he can.
Okay.
I'm not sure if everything's going to be closed in, because we still have windows, metal, and all that to go up there, too.
Windows are due very soon. I think in the next week they do on-site. And once the windows are in, the building is, building's with the silver aluminum coating on the outside.
Right.
They have a roof on them, that, that building is tight.
Right.
The brick is for exterior appearance and, and weatherproofing from elements-type thing, but the building is tight once they have the aluminum foil exterior on the building, so.
I would like to thank Gil Bain for their, their first topic on the newsletter, which is, what will happen after you flush a toilet in the integrated middle high school? So I want to thank them for coming up with that.
Well, that's essential.
It is. It is essential. It's a couple of interesting facts here. Nineteen thousand nine hundred, I'm going to say person hours, not man hours, since June 2013, and over a hundred twenty-five construction workers on the site each day. They've poured more than thirty-one hundred cubic yards of concrete on the site. So, it's good stuff.
Yeah, it is. It's a, I tell you, the more you're up there and the more you watch it, the more appreciation you have for how complex and how big a project it is. It's really, it's really something.
Okay. Next, school committee calendar with presentations for this year.
Yes. As you know, last year, a real effort was made to include presentations by the faculty to the school committee at your request. So included in your packet is the meeting schedule that now includes proposed presentations to the committee over the course of this school year. So I just wanted to give you an opportunity to take a look at that schedule, and then if there are any changes or additions that you'd like to make, I will definitely take those back to the administrative council. They sat with us and reviewed those presentations that will be made to the school committee.
Any input? I have, I didn't see the hood on here, did I miss it?
That's the one piece that's missing. Glenn had, Principal McKay had given me a date that bumped up against a budget presentation.
Okay.
So we're going to add that tomorrow. I'm meeting with him, and that's part of our conversation.
Okay, the other two things, and I don't know if this has to be a presentation, but the school committee goals progress review, I don't know if that's a presentation, if you want to put that on here.
Good point.
And then, also Northeast Voc update?
Yes. Would the school committee goals update coincide with the superintendent goals progress update?
When is it?
Mid-year?
Yeah.
January 13th?
Yeah.
And then.
And so then, like a week or so before that, you can get us out the goals, so we can take a look at where we are.
Will do. And when would you like for the representative from the vocational school to come?
Anytime.
Do you have a preference?
No.
In the spring or winter?
Winter probably would be good.
Maybe February 10th?
Yeah, have a mid-year, or come in.
Okay.
And I think we said, we initially were going to try to have them come in twice a year, but I think once a year is probably a good update.
I will contact her.
Anybody else? This looks good.
Very good. So I will give you an updated schedule of the next meeting.
So this is an under continued business, but I wanted to ask you for an update on the park testing, which we talked about last week, the new testing for the Common Core.
Sure. Well, as you know, superintendents across the state needed to respond to a survey that had been submitted by Pearson, who is the vendor for the new park field test, and we needed to indicate whether or not we felt that the schools that were identified for participation in the park could in fact, or would in fact, participate, or were there schools that superintendents felt should be exempt. So I did submit that the little school and the bachelor's school will participate. I also indicated that I felt the middle school and the high school should be exempt from the park field test. So I indicated that on the form that I submitted. I do not know if that will be honored, but I had indicated on the survey that the middle school was involved in a major building project that was taking place on-site, and that was the reason that I cited for the middle school. I cited that same reason for the high school, as well as the NEASC site visit that will be taking place in March at the high school. So I'm not quite sure if they will be considered extenuating circumstances, but I felt that it was my responsibility to send that information along to Pearson for their consideration.
I'll add that the Mass Association of School Committees is taking an active role in this, and I actually gave the superintendent tonight some information. There seems to be some confusion about possibly getting a waiver from the park test, but you're going to check into that and see what the, what the real.
I will do that.
Okay. Anything else on park? Okay. Communications Subcommittee appointment. I think Cliff and I had been serving on that.
Yes.
I'm willing to do it again, if Cliff is willing to do it again, then we'll.
That's easy.
So we just need a nomination.
I'd move to appoint Chairman Webster, and I think vice chairman, Bowles, to the Communications Committee.
It's a powerful committee.
Yes.
I second.
Further discussion? Falls in favor?
Hi.
I oppose, four zero. I need to get, I know you said, you were looking for a date for a meeting. I'll need to send you, you sent me an email asking for a date.
Yes.
I'll send it back to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Next, 2013 North Reading Public Schools Accountability and Assistance Ratings.
Yes, thank you. On Friday, September 20th, the Department of Education lifted the embargo on the 2013 MCAS results, as well as the accountability and, excuse me, assistance ratings. So what's being passed out to you now is a quick overview of what's posted to the Department of Education regarding the MCAS annual comparisons for all of the schools tested, and these are the district results that I have distributed to you, as well as the accountability data for North Reading. We will have a more in-depth presentation on the MCAS results at the second October school committee meeting, which will then incorporate all of the analysis that will be done by our teachers at all of the schools, as well as Dr. Patrick Daly. So right now, tonight is just a brief overview, since the results have been released, I thought I would just point out some of the highlights of the results. So there are seventeen tests that are administered in North Reading, and six of those seventeen tests saw the highest percent in advanced on the 2013 MCAS results. And the eleven of those seventeen tests saw an increase in the percent in advanced over 2012. So I'm just going to go through and quickly highlight for you. The grade ten English Language Arts, we have the highest percent of students scoring in advanced with fifty-nine percent. That's an increase of sixteen percentage points over last year. But the percent of students scoring in proficient in advanced is ninety-six, which is the same as last year. In mathematics, we have an increase of one percentage point of the percent of students scoring in proficient in advanced on the grade ten mathematics, so that's eighty-nine percent. And in grade ten, science and technology engineering, we had forty-two percent of our students scoring in advanced, that's the highest ever. And the combined proficient in advanced percent of students is eighty-seven, which is up two percentage points over last year. If you turn the page, you'll see.
Before you go on.
Oh, okay.
Can I, I don't understand the difference between district and the high school in the tenth grade. Where do you have the kids, because the high school scores were actually better.
That's a very good question, Mr. Webster, and I should have started my presentation with saying that the district scores include the scores of all students in outside placements that take the MCAS test. So that's the difference between the district high school scores and the North Reading high school results.
Because for the high school, the kids at the high school in the tenth grade, we actually had sixty-two percent advanced versus fifty-nine. For math, we had sixty-eight advanced versus sixty-six for the district. And for science, we had forty-four advanced versus forty-two for the district.
Tonight, I'm just doing district results.
But what I'm saying to you is, again, this makes no sense, the way the state does this.
But it's apples to apples, Mel. In other words, every district has the same.
Correct. No, it's apples to apples.
So it includes all students, even though they're out of district. I think we've talked about this in the past, too, yeah.
It might be apples to apples, but to me, they're dumb apples. That's all. That's all.
But thank you for pointing, I should have said that at the beginning, because anybody that has taken a look at these results will see that there is a difference.
Right.
In eighth grade, and you'll see a similar difference at the middle school between what the middle school scores are in the district. In eighth grade English Language Arts, we had twenty-three percent of our students score in advanced at the district level. That's the highest over the past four years. And we had a combined ninety-four percent of the students score in proficient, proficient and advanced, which is two percentage points higher over 2012. And again, the highest over the last four years. In grade eight mathematics, thirty-seven percent of our students scored in the advanced category. That's fourteen percentage points higher than the previous year, for an overall seventy-one percent scoring in proficient and advanced. In eighth grade, science and technology engineering, we have the same percent of students scoring in proficient and advanced as we did last year, and that is fifty-four percent.
So on that one, is that, is that a bad test, or we're not teaching the right thing? Because this has been consistently low.
And I don't know how it compares to other districts, but it seems odd that you've got three percent advanced.
They were all low.
Yeah.
All districts are low.
Yeah.
In the state.
Right. What I'm going to be doing is taking this, every year, because of my background in curriculum, I focus on one test and take a look at it in-depth, and really dig into the data, because Dr. Daly really is the one that is doing the data analysis. But I am going to be taking a look at, you know that science is only administered in grades five, eight, and ten. Well, grade nine for biology. So I'll be taking a look at the grade eight, because if you take a look at the results in grade five and in grade ten, you see a higher percentage of students scoring in the advanced and proficient level. But in grade eight, there's a considerable dip. So I'm going to be digging into the data as far as the grade eight science test. I've already taken a look at Edwin Analytics to take a look at explaining why the performance at our middles, in our eighth grade, which is a cumulative test, six, seven, and eight, why that performance is the way it is in North Reading. We'll also be taking a look at the data from the DART communities, as you know. The nine other communities that have been identified as comparable to North Reading have been identified, so I'm going to take a look at their results as well and see where we fall.
If you look at the statewide results, eighth grade science results have been an issue for the last four years.
So there's something wrong with the test, because.
Right, it's either the test or the curriculum.
It's an anomaly. The other, the other tests aren't anything close to that.
I'll have more answers for you at the end of October, because I'm going to do what what I used to do.
Because if, if it's not consistent with the state and the other districts, then we've got a problem.
Yeah, no, it is.
Right. Okay. So, as we take a look at grade seven, you'll see that English Language Arts is exactly, just about exactly the same as it was the previous year.
Every year.
With eighty-seven percent of our students scoring in proficient and advanced. In grade seven mathematics, thirty percent of our students scored advanced. That's the highest that's ever scored in advanced over the last four years, and it shows a two-point increase over 2012 for a total of seventy-two percent of the students scoring in proficient in advanced, which is an increase overall of six percentage points. So, that's good to see. In grade six, English Language Arts, we have seventy-five percent of our students scoring in proficient and advanced. That is a decline of eleven percentage points from 2012 to 2013. As a matter of fact, if you take a look at 2010, eleven, and twelve, you'll see it was pretty consistent. It was eighty-five percent in 2010, eighty-seven in 2011, eighty-six in 2012. So, we need to figure out every once in a while what the blip is.
Well, we're below, and the, it's, the drop is concerning, but that's also lower than the state average. And we, North Reading should not be lower than the state average on any test results.
Plus, that's a significant drop in the number of advances. I know it's a relatively small, but still, it's...
Small cohort.
Exactly. So, it's, one year does not constitute a trend, but it is worth digging into the data to find out just what the issue is with grade six English Language Arts last year. Grade six mathematics, it was pretty similar to the previous year. We saw seventy-five percent of the students scoring in proficient and advanced compared to seventy-seven percent last year, and that's pretty consistent for the last three years. But what's a little concerning to me is that we're seeing a steady, even though it's incremental, a steady decline since 2011 of the percent of students scoring in proficient and advanced. In 2011, it was seventy-nine. 2012, seventy-seven. 2013, seventy-five. While it's not a large discrepancy, it causes me to ask, you know, what's going on?
Yeah, because by 2030, we'll be down to...
Yeah.
Very low.
So, anyway, I'll be taking a look at that. In grade five, English Language Arts, we have twenty-six percent of our students scoring in advanced and fifty-seven scoring in proficient for a total of eighty-three percent. That is a nine percentage point increase from 2007, I mean, 2012 to 2013. But you will notice that in 2010 and 2011, they were up in the mid-eighties. So, in 2013, again, that performance is consistent with two to three years ago. So, 2012 was one of those blips on the screen where we saw a dip in performance, but now the performance is right back up where it had been previously.
So, you can correlate the 2012 fifth grade to the 2013 sixth grade?
Correct.
Correct?
Well, you can't correlate the tests, but you can take a look...
No, no.
What we have to look at is the SGP, and that's what we'll be talking to you about, the student growth percentile.
Okay.
We need to see if our students made growth even though there was a dip in the overall results of the MCAS, because growth is what's most important. Then you take a look at grade five mathematics, and you can see that we have seventy-three percent of our students scoring in proficient and advanced. That's five percentage points lower than the previous year, and that's about nine percentage points lower than the year before that. So, again, anytime I see three years of data where there is a trend up or down, that's an area where we need to dig deep into the data to find out what's going on.
But as Jerry mentioned earlier, the issue with all of these results is if we're talking five percent, we're talking, what, a hundred and seventy elementary school kids or something that took the test? So, we're talking about eight kids. So, the fallacy of all of these tests are, if you have a hundred and seventy kids, it's not like a hundred and sixty-five are doing poorly. Yes, we want all a hundred and seventy kids to be excelling, but it's not like there's a huge number, because it's down, even, even down sixteen percent.
No, not at all.
At the sixth grade, English is about thirty students. Now, that's a little high, but still...
This is still a very strong performance.
Yeah.
Very strong. But anytime I see any kind of a little bit of a trend, it's very important that we take a look at what's going on behind the data. And you're right, it could be just a number of, a small number of students, but that's still something that we want to take a look at, because that then feeds in to our accountability data, and we'll get to that in a moment. If you take a look at grade five science, you'll see that we had, again, the highest number of students scoring in advanced over the last four years at thirty-three percent. And if you combine advanced and proficient, seventy percent of our students are scoring proficient in advanced. Again, a very strong showing, and pretty similar to the previous three years. It's a little bit of a drop, but it's not anything that is alarming. It's, it's pretty consistent performance.
But Jerry, you see there, look at this, the science for our fifth grade.
Yep.
And then you get to eighth grade, and you have two, three, four percent scoring advanced. It doesn't make any sense.
There's something wrong with the test.
And if you look at the tenth grade...
Right.
Similarly, you have...
Forty-two percent scoring in advanced.
Very high numbers in the proficient and advanced.
It's almost as if they're testing for something that hasn't been taught.
Right.
That's what it certainly appears to be.
I'll be taking a look at it. I'll give you answers in October. In grade four, English Language Arts, again, look at that number in advanced, twenty-four percent of our students, that's the highest number that we've had in the last four years in the advanced category, eight points higher than the previous year. So, this year, we have a combined seventy-six percent of students scoring in proficient and advanced on the English Language Arts in grade four, again, with an overall increase of eight percentage points. Similarly, in grade four mathematics, we had twenty-five percent of our students scoring in advanced, again, the highest percentage over the last four years, for a total of seventy-one percent of our students. That's the highest percent of students scoring in proficient in advanced, six points higher than last year. Finally, grade three, English Language Arts, we have seventy-seven percent of our students scoring in proficient and advanced. That's a little bit of a decline from the previous year, but nothing that requires any in-depth analysis at this point. And our grade three mathematics, forty-seven percent of our students scored in advanced in grade three mathematics, eight points higher for a combined total of eighty-nine percent of our students scoring in proficient and advanced in grade three math. That's nine points higher than the previous year.
Just a comment on grade three English from things I've read.
Yes.
That seems to be another statewide issue. There's a concern with the scores at the early grades in English Language Arts. And again, is it what they're testing, or is it what we're teaching, or is it a combination of what we're not teaching, or a combination of both?
Well, across the state, there was a decline in grades three and four ELA by about four points. They're saying it's been flat over the last five years. We're not, we haven't declined that much, but we are somewhat flat in grade three. So, it's comparable to what's taking place at the state. And we are following the trends pretty much, but our grade five ELA had a nine-point gain. Our grade five math showed a five-point decline, but that, again, mirrors what's taking place across the state in mathematics. And then, I've already talked to you about science. We've exceeded what the statewide average is in grade eight mathematics by fourteen points, so that's fabulous. So, again, this is a very quick overview of the MCAS results. We'll have a much more in-depth analysis. Mr. Webster, was there anything else you wanted to add about MCAS?
I think overall, the assessment, the scores seem good to me. There is a few areas that you pointed out. But then when I look at the accountability, who sits around all day to come up with these formulas to determine whether or not we're doing a good job? Because now I look at this accountability data that you're going to go over, and I see do not meet target, do not meet target, do not meet target, not, I just, what, what are we supposed to be doing? Yeah, I know, we're supposed to get a seventy-five. That's a number. It's, anyway, go ahead, go ahead with the accountability data. It's so, it's so frustrating, I just can't...
Well, on a positive note, in 2012, three of our schools were considered to be Level Two, and this year, there are two schools that are considered to be Level Two. So, the bachelor has moved from a Level Two school to a Level One school, which means they have met all of their target improvement areas for all subgroups. But let's start on the first page, which is the accountability for the district. And I'll just walk you through the page to orient what you see. If you take a look at the top of the page, you'll see what level the district is in. It's Level Two. And if one or more schools in the district are classified into Level Two, the district is Level Two. And then if you look below that...
Something else that makes a lot of sense, by the way.
If you look below that, you'll see a table, and it talks about the student groups. And you'll see that there's a student group for all students, high needs, low income, ELL and former ELL, students with disabilities, American Indians or Alaska natives, Asian, African-American or Black, Hispanic Latino, multirace, non-Hispanic Latino, and Pacific Islanders, and then White. So, you need to have a minimum of thirty students in a subgroup in order to receive results for that subgroup. If you have less than thirty, no results are posted. Now, the high needs group is an unduplicated count of students belonging to at least one of the following groups: students with disabilities, ELL and former ELL, or low income. So, any student that falls into one or more than one of those subgroups is only counted once in the high needs group. That is a new subgroup when we went into this new accountability. And then, the composite, the cumulative performance index, progress and performance index, is what you need to achieve a seventy-five or higher on to be considered meeting your target improvement area. And the CPPI is four years' worth of data averaged to give you this number, with the most recent year receiving heavier weight than the fourth year. So, it's all weighted, and, and these metrics are used to determine what your CPPI will be. So, if you take a look at this form, you can see that, and the targets are identified by taking a look at what our CPI was, composite performance index, in 2011, and taking a look at where we need to be by 2016, seventeen, identifying what that gap is, and then cutting it in half, and then strategically mapping out how many points we need to earn on top of the 2011 CPPI to get us to where we need to be by 2016, seventeen. I don't know if that's clear, but...
Can you, but what, so, we have a number here, seventy-five, we have to hit. This number that floats out there in space, there is an apparent student, or probably teacher in the world, that really understands this. What does CPPI measure? What does it measure?
I will tell you. This is called the cumulative PPI. So, there's an annual PPI.
Well, I would expect.
Yes. And then there's the cumulative PPI.
What about the semual?
Yeah, semi-annual, the sappy that would be.
So, the cumulative PPI is, is what I just mentioned to you. A cumulative PPI is calculated for a group if it has at least three annual PPIs. And if a group is missing an annual PPI for one year, that year is left out of the weighting.
But what makes that, see, what I'm getting at is what is the underlying data? What makes up the APPI, the CPPI? Because if we don't have that...
Right.
I can't make any sense out of this.
Well, and again, I will hand this out to you. This, there is a guide, it's called an Accountability Determinations Guide. An annual PPI is a measurement of improvement toward one's target over a two-year period on up to seven core indicators. So, you have, what you need to do is narrow the proficiency gap. And that proficiency gap is the distance between the group's 2011 composite performance index and a CPI of one hundred. And the goal is for all schools and districts and groups to halve that gap in the six-year period between 2011 and 2017. So, the CPI is a one-hundred-point index that assigns one hundred, seventy-five, fifty, twenty-five, or zero points to each student participating in the MCAS or the MCAS ALT. And it's based on their performance. And the CPI is a measure of the extent to which all students are progressing toward proficiency. So, it's an algorithm.
Right. It's something that has nothing to do with education. And after you mention all of that, all of that data, that information you just gave us, and after we look at the MCAS scores, I don't understand how all of our students aren't meeting whatever this magical CPPI thing is. I just, it's, it doesn't make any sense, that's all.
The whole notion behind a cumulative PPI is to narrow the gap between where we were with our CPI in 2011 and the number one hundred. And they've identified the gap as half of that number, and we need to reach whatever that, the half of that number is by 2016, seventeen, to show continuous growth.
I'd rather look at where our kids go to college and what they do in college and after they graduate from college and this stuff, but you go ahead, this, it's just ludicrous. I mean, they've tried it, they're taking education, and they're breaking it down into these CPPIs and APPIs, and it just, it doesn't, it doesn't do it for me. Maybe I'm the wrong guy to be chairman of the school committee here, I just...
I didn't want to say anything.
Mr. Bowles, do you have a comment on this before the superintendent goes forward? Because it's infuriating.
I think the fact that we, the cohorts are below the level that make it just, it all, you know, reasonable and, and rational. I think that's the basic problem. Your cohorts are too small. And you have, you know, if you have ten kids, and one kid screws up...
Right.
Because ten percent, you don't make it.
Right.
And you're, you're dead in the water.
And there were districts smaller than we are.
Right. Exactly.
So, this, this is an interesting thing if you had four thousand kids in the, in the elementary school, a particular one.
You get a much truer measurement.
Then you might have some more significance. But this just doesn't have significance. But, you know, one size fits all. The more government you have...
I was going to say, one size fits all.
One, the more government you have, and more government involvement you have, the less sense you get.
I would like to meet the people who came up with the algorithm, though. I bet they're fascinating. Go ahead.
There's a bureaucrat that's making a whole lot of money because of this.
Sorry, we're so cantankerous.
No, that's okay. I'm, you're entitled to your opinion. You can see that, as far as the district is concerned, you can see what our numbers are as far as our cumulative PPI for the subgroups of all students, high needs, low income, students with disabilities, Asian, and White. I can tell you that we have met our target in low income, and we consistently have done that over the course of the last two years that these numbers were issued. We increased students with disabilities. Our CPPI did go up by five points. Last year, it was sixty-one, this year it's sixty-six. High needs, last year it was fifty-eight, this year it's sixty. All students, it was seventy last year, it is again this year. And for Asian, we have a hundred percent this year, last year it was ninety-nine. So, if you take a look, I'm going to just take you to the next page. Take a look at the little school. They're a Level One. You can see that their overall CPPI was eighty-five, and that's higher than it was last year. Last year it was eighty-one. And they've met their targets for all students, high needs, and White. Those are the only subgroups at the little school where there's over thirty students in each of the subgroups.
Okay, I have to ask you a question again.
Yes.
I'm not very good in math, but, so, for all students, they had eighty-eight. For high needs, they had eighty-six.
Yes.
And for White, they had eighty-nine, yet their total score is eighty-five. So, we had eighty-eight, eighty-six, and eighty-nine, but their score is eighty-five.
Of course.
Don't ask me why. I can tell you why. Because the, the weighting of the results for each of the years is different. So, the weighting for the results of 2013 is, is, has a higher weight than 2012...
Whatever you tell me isn't, I'm not going to...
All right, well, I'm just telling you.
To me, the, the magic to this is you get to the last page of this document, and it has the high school.
Right.
Yes.
And when you look at the high school results...
Right.
We, in fact, are a Level One.
Right.
And our scores for all students, students, is eighty-two. And for other schools that are of the same type are one point below us. So, when you get to the high school, it's like all the rest of the data all the way through. When you get to the final result, we managed to come around and solve all the problems. And that's been consistent through the, all the time I've been on the, on the committee. So, you, what you're, what you're getting out of the system is what you're looking for, you're educating the kids. Do they meet all of the stuff in between? No. But that's because of cohorts again.
Yes.
Again. But I do want to point out something about the hood. I think it's a good news story, even though you're seeing that they're a Level Two and they have not met their targets. I took a look at last year's data, and there is a good news story here. If you take a look at all students, last year it was sixty-five, this year it's sixty-seven. Their high needs group score last year was thirty-six, this year it's fifty-six. They've increased by twenty in their high needs group. For students with disabilities, their score last year was twenty, this year it's fifty. Now, they still aren't meeting their target, but they increased by thirty points. That's incredible. And then overall, last year it was sixty-eight for White, and this year it's sixty-nine. So, while they are still not meeting all of their gap narrowing goals, or any of them at this point, they have made some considerable progress in those subgroups. And that's what the intention is, in showing you subgroup performance if, in fact, there are thirty or more students that fall into that particular category. So, they are plugging away and improving their performance. You saw the bachelor last year, they did not make Level One, they were Level Two, and that's because of their high needs group. Last year it was seventy, this year it's eighty-eight. So, again, they have made a considerable improvement, and they are now a Level One school.
But those kids are now into the middle school, so the middle school's being hit by it, yeah.
Right. Right. And then, middle school, we are, again... And then, middle school, we are, again, seeing an increase. Even though they did not meet their target in four out of the five areas. Last year, they didn't meet their target in area, any of the areas. So overall, they have a CPPI of sixty-nine, last year it was sixty-seven. For all students, it's sixty-nine, last year it was seventy. For high needs, this year it's sixty, last year it was fifty-four, so they've increased by six points in high needs. Last year, they did not meet the target for our low-income students. It was sixty-six, this year it's seventy-nine. They have met the target for students that have been identified as low-income. Last year, for students with disabilities, they earned a forty-six, this year it's fifty-eight, so that's increased by twelve points. And last year, the overall for white was seventy-two, this year it's sixty-seven. So that was, we did see a decline there. But they have increased in three out of the five categories at the middle school, even though they have not met their targets. So there's improvement. And Mr. Bowers already pointed out to you that at the end of the day, our tenth graders are achieving at very high levels. They met all targets, they are a Level One school.
So we have to meet, all schools have to meet these goals by 2016-17?
Yes, the, the goal is for every year to meet your goals.
Right, but I'm saying-
But sixteen, seventeen is the last year of this accountability and assistance category.
I have a question.
Yes.
With the PARC being implemented most likely next year, how are we going to obtain this information to note if we hit the goal in 2016?
This won't go away, but, very interestingly, the Department of Education is not quite sure right now how they will adjust the accountability ratings based on the students that may be exempt from taking the MCAS. Because there will be a hole in the data. And I believe that they said-
Like, I mean, an MCAS test.
So they, they will be, it's possible that they will not be counting the students that are participating in PARC, which will be ninety-two percent of the population as opposed to one hundred percent of the population. So they told us more information to come.
If PARC takes over in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, right?
The state hasn't even-
MCAS is not going to be there anymore.
That's a possibility. Recently, we received, when the results come out every year, we receive notification from the commissioner that, you know, how the state did, students on the, on the state results. And he makes a statement about student performance. It was very interesting this year that included in his memo of September eighteenth, two thousand thirteen, when he released the state results. He said, "While I am pleased to see more than a decade of continuous improvement at grade ten, it's clear that MCAS is not providing us with the signal or rigor we need to tell us whether students are on track and ready for college-level work," said Commissioner Jester. "To remedy this, schools are implementing new college and career-ready standards, and we are developing a next-generation assessment to assess, to assess a broader range of the skills we value and employers tell us are necessary to prepare students for success after high school." We've never seen that kind of a comment in the past. So it's laying the groundwork for PARC being implemented. The Department of Education still needs to vote whether or not we're going to replace a test, our MCAS test, with PARC. That hasn't taken place yet, but we are field testing PARC in the state of Massachusetts.
That'll make sense. As an educator, and I'm not going to put you on the spot, but I will say this. Obviously, we, as a school committee, you as an educator, your staff, administrators, teachers, everybody understands the need for accountability. Everybody understands the need for improvement, right?
Yes.
I think everybody also understands that sometimes there are kids who, for whatever reasons, can only be taught to a certain level, right? At least, that's my, my belief, okay? Yet, as Cliff said, they throw everything into one size fits all. So if you have an urban district or another district that's just a horrible school district, they do, they get the same thing that we get. So they might be scoring twenty on whatever this magical seventy-five CPPI thing is here, or whatever they, and we're scoring seventy-one, yet we have to do the same thing. It, it just doesn't make any sense to me. And as an educator, I think that, without putting you on the spot, you would say there are probably a lot of other things we can measure to determine whether we're successfully educating our students. And that's what bothers me about all of this. And the focus just gets more and more and more on this stuff every year. Whereas you're almost forgetting about what we're really trying to do in terms of educating the whole child. And that's what, that's why I get so bothered by this. Because it becomes an algorithm. Let's, let's measure the algorithms and, you know, no, let's measure the kids and see what they're doing when they get out of high school, and what they're doing in high school, and when they graduate from college. And, you know, you hear these things, oh, so all these kids need to take remedial courses when they get to college, their freshman year of college, because they're not ready for college. Well, what kids are they? Where are they from? Are they from North Reading? Are they from Lawrence? Are they from Linfield? Are they from Boston? Where are they from? Don't just lump them in all together and then make us all do the same thing. I don't know if you want to answer any of that, but-
Well, I can tell you, back in nineteen ninety-three, when the Education Reform Act was first passed, what was included were the kinds of assessments that allowed students to demonstrate their knowledge and understanding through performance-based assessments or portfolio assessments. They were not, it was not meant for students to be taking the kinds of tests that they're taking now. I think standards are wonderful. We all need to have standards so that we have a level of coherence and consistency regarding what we're teaching across our classrooms. I've been an educator for a long time, and I can tell you that, back in the day, it was not unusual for a teacher in a third-grade classroom to be teaching something that was not the same as what was being taught in another third-grade classroom in the same school. So standards were a very positive change to what has taken place since ed reform was enacted. I am concerned about the number of assessments that our students are being required to take. I'm very concerned about connecting the results of a test to our educator evaluation system. I believe that we had a very good system in place here in North Reading. I believe that the new educator evaluated, evaluation system that we're putting into place also has lots of opportunity for us to grow as educators, and that's really the name of the game. We need to continue to grow, we can never be complacent. And so it's very important for all of us to be accountable for what's taking place in the classroom and to use student performance results to help us improve in areas where we need to improve. And that's the kind of analysis that we do on MCAS every year. So we want to continue to do that. But I am concerned about the direction that we're taking in education. I don't care how many times you weigh a pig, a pig is still going to weigh the same. So I think it's very important that we're trying to take the best of all of these initiatives that are coming to us, but I am concerned about the amount of time that's being devoted to assessment. And it's a different kind, it's a summative kind of assessment as opposed to formative assessment. And formative assessment is the kind of assessment that takes place in classrooms every day, at the end of every unit, at the end of every quarter or trimester, to really give us a sense of how our students are performing, where do we need to provide remediation or acceleration, and then how do we help those students grow from one year to the next.
And, you know, all of this comes down to, you need money from the state and federal government to operate your schools, so you got to play by their rules. That's really-
Well, you got to play by their rules because they're the rulers.
Right.
It wasn't supposed to be that way. That's the way it is.
And as Mr. Bowers and you pointed out, when the kids go through high school, we're meeting all of our requirements at the high school level, so it's not a miracle. I mean, we're doing the right thing all the way up through.
Our students consistently perform at high levels. And I believe that there's always room for growth, but the higher your performance, the less distance there is to cover to become the best. As opposed to if you weren't performing at a very high level, you have further to go. So you can make considerable growth from one year to the next, and that shows in the student scores.
I think one other part of this is this mentality that, and I think it's changing a little bit, that everybody that goes to high school has to then graduate and go to college, adds to this kind of pressure here because every kid doesn't have to go to college. And I'm seeing a change in mentality. I'm hearing different people around the state talking more about, you know, vocational technical schools post-high school. And I think that's important to look at that, too. Because there are kids that want to do that, and there is a need for those, you know, those, those types of jobs, those trades.
When you take a look at what our colleagues in the vocational schools are doing, not only do students have to take a competency test in their trade, but they also need to take the MCAS test. So, you know, they really are being held to a very high standard in our vocational schools.
All right. Well, it's frustrating, but appreciate the report. Okay, NRPS two thousand sixteen, year three.
I'm just going to give you a quick update on where we are at. I'm going to stand at the podium so that I can advance the slides for you. They should be coming up now. And I believe that Mr. Conley is passing out the slides for the conference. See, I think you have a copy of them in your packet. I think, Dan, you have a copy as well. Okay. So as you know, NRPS two thousand sixteen is the plan that we use to drive all of the decisions that are being made regarding academics in all of our schools. So back in two thousand eleven, I talked about what is a strategy and why are we being strategic about the work that we're doing. And you know that a strategy requires us to identify a few of those high-leverage ways to improve instruction and student learning. And we always need to focus on the instructional core. So what is the instructional core? It's the interaction of teachers and students in the presence of content. And each point is critical. Anytime you want to make an improvement to student performance, you need to be looking at all three points of that triangle. If you adjust just one point, you will not see the kind of improvement that you would if you were focusing on all three simultaneously. So that's the focus of all that we do, the instructional core. As you know, we created a vision, and that vision is very short and sweet. That vision for the North Reading Public Schools is to prepare all students to be productive citizens who thrive in the twenty-first century. It is short but complex to carry out. Then we have our mission. We had a mission in the North Reading Public School District, so we tweaked it a little bit, and we changed some of the language, but essentially it says the same, and you'll notice that the core values of the North Reading Public Schools remain the same. They are embedded in the mission, and those core values are excellence, service, and lifelong learning. So the vision talks about where do we want to be, and the mission tells us how we're going to get there. It's the journey. So when we established the goals for the North Reading Public School District, we identified eight of those goals that defined where we want to be, and we linked each of those goals to the teacher and administrative standards of the new educator evaluation system. So as you had seen, when we talked about why is a strategy important, you identified those few areas that will leverage the most improvement for student performance. We identified three areas as teaching and learning, student services, and technology integration. Each one of those three major strategy areas has a theory of action, a goal statement, and then strategic objectives. Each one has three objectives. Under teaching and learning, we're talking about aligning the curriculum vertically and horizontally. We are talking about hiring and retaining highly qualified staff. And we're talking about using the data that we have available to us to improve student learning outcomes. Under student services, we have three objectives again, and they are to develop in-district programming that meets the needs of our students, to really make sure that our professional development supports the implementation of a comprehensive instructional model in all schools, and to create a consistent instructional process that focuses on student learning to measure individual student progress. And under technology, technology integration, the three strategic objectives are, again, hire and retain highly qualified technology staff to develop a shared district technology vision and to enhance the infrastructure and support system in the district. So as you know, NRPS two thousand sixteen is a five-year plan. And each of these objectives have initiatives associated with them, and those initiatives play out over each of the five years. So what we do every year is we take a look at NRPS two thousand sixteen during our summer administrator leadership retreat. So you really can't see the pictures here, it's too bad. They're pictures of the principals at the elementary school, the assistant principal, and the principal of the middle school, and the assistant principal and the principal of the high school. And they're working on the review and the revision of our NRPS two thousand sixteen. So this summer, for two days, July first and second, the leadership team took a look at what was set out in NRPS two thousand sixteen in year one and year two. What did we accomplish? What has not yet been accomplished? And we used all of that analysis to take a look at what was identified to take place in year three. We revised year three to reflect years one and two. And after we revised year three, we again took a look at how year four and five need to reflect what we anticipate will take place in year three. So we've made all of those changes, we've made the revisions. We will be posting the revised NRPS two thousand sixteen to the website after the presentation tonight. But what I'd like to share with you is what our focus will be for each of those three major strategy areas for this school year. So in two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen, under teaching and learning, we'll be spending a lot of time implementing the first year of the educator evaluation system. We'll continue to identify what are those essential standards in kindergarten through grade twelve. We're developing our common assessments to reflect the revision to the essential standards. We are providing a course for our teachers on understanding by design. What that course takes a look at is unit development, starting with the end in mind. We're in the process of putting that course in place. It will be a graduate course that will be offered in district for our educators. And then we'll continue to develop our data teams in each of the schools and at the district level so that we're taking a look at specific data and being consistent with how that data is used to improve student performance. Under technology integration, we're taking a look at our technology leadership and support staff. You will see that reflected in the FY fifteen budget presentation that will be made to you later on this school year. We're taking a look at our current library-media model and doing some research in the field as to what does a library-media center of the twenty-first century look like? And do we need to make any changes to what we currently have in place in all of our schools? It's very important that we are current with our internet safety curriculum. We have our technology team and our technology support staff that will be focusing on internet safety and implementing that this year as a pilot. We're also coming up with our information literacy plan. What are those information standards that each student needs to know and be able to do by the end of each grade? It's another way for us to articulate what we want to be in place for our students, and that will be, again, put on the fast track this year now that we have another digital learning specialist on board. We'll be taking a look at the large cap plan that will be coming to you at the next school committee meeting and be discussing whether or not we would like to put forward a proposal to include in our large capital improvement request. Because we have our middle school, high school, construction project underway, we'll be taking a look at the technology that's currently in place in the middle school and the high school and be identifying those pieces of hardware that can be repurposed at the elementary level. And we'll have that plan developed by early spring. And then, of course, professional development is ongoing. So we'll be identifying who in our district are experts that can share their level of expertise with their colleagues, also known as teachers' teaching teachers. We also take a look at what other professional development is needed by our technology support staff so that they can remain current in their support roles to our educators in the classroom. And under student services, for two thousand thirteen, fourteen, even though we have an interim PPS director, we're still going to continue to move ahead with defining our entrance and exit criteria for all of our programs across the district. Remember, we had the- Remember, we had the Walker Partnership Evaluation done of our special education program and services, so we're going to be taking a look at one recommendation, which was to include a social, emotional, and behavioral program in the district. So we'll be assessing what is the current population in district as well as out of district that might be able to populate an in-district program, and if we are able to establish one and support it with the FY15 budget, we'll then be identifying those students in outside placements who may be able to return to the district. The retail implementation plan. Retail is a way of taking a look at, it's another state mandate that we must comply with. We are in cohort three with a third of three cohorts, so we have a requirement to be training up some teachers around how we better meet the needs of students who do not, who speak English as a second language. So we'll be creating our plan this year for implementation over the next two years. We have a co-teaching model in place. Several years ago, there was an initiative to provide professional development to our special educators and regular ed teachers. We've reinvigorated that co-teaching initiative. This past summer, we trained more teachers in the co-teaching model, and that's being implemented across the district. I believe you actually heard from a co-teacher when we visited the hood last year, and she talked about how wonderful this resurgence of co-teaching is across the district. And finally, we'll be taking a look at a tiered intervention model, also known as RTI, response to intervention, but Massachusetts has created a model called MTSS, Massachusetts Tiered System of Support. So we'll be taking a look at that. We'll be matching the MTSS to what's currently in place across the district and coming up with a consistent tiered intervention model across all five of our schools.
Just a quick question on the retail.
Yes.
And again, seems to me it's another one-size-fits-all program from the state, but have we had issues in our district with English-language learners that we have not been meeting whatever standards, or is that just something that is the state's having all districts comply with regardless of how well you've done in the past?
This, all districts need to comply. This was, there was a suit that was filed at the federal level against the state of Massachusetts regarding provisions of meeting the needs of English-language learners. So in response to that case, there were requirements that needed to be implemented in the state of Massachusetts to be in compliance with federal law. So we're, in terms of North Reading, we are a very low-incidence school district.
I was going to ask, do you know what the numbers are in our district of English-language learners, or I guess they just call it English as a second language, or...
Sure. It's very small. I believe, I haven't received the latest census, but I think it's anywhere between 10 and 15 students across the entire district.
Okay.
And that's considered very low incident.
Yeah.
But we still need to comply. So 14 of our teachers need to be trained in a particular instructional model by 2015-16. So we'll start that training next year. That training is coming to us from the department free of charge.
The time isn't, though.
Pardon me?
The teachers have to spend the time on it, though.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, next steps, again, we're involved very much so now in the analysis of our 2013 MCAS results. We'll adjust our targets for improvement. You may recall at the end of NRPS 2016 there, we're using the SGP, this student growth percentile, as the metric to determine whether or not we are making progress toward narrowing the achievement gap. And so we'll adjust those targets based on the 2013 MCAS results. We'll implement the initiatives. We will include those initiatives that require financial support in the FY15 budget presentation to the school committee. And then again, we'll continue with the process of evaluate our performance, revise the plan as needed, and implement the following school year. Any questions? Okay.
Actually, I have one question I quickly wanted to ask you. To go back to this, it's not related to 2016, NRPS 2016. It's related to the MCAS scores and the accountability data.
Yes.
For, for the district, for all students this year, we were at 70. You know where we were? Oh, we were 70 last year, too? I didn't write that down.
For the district?
Yeah.
The district does not receive one overall...
I mean, for all students?
Oh, for all students, we were 70, I'm sorry.
And 70, we were 70 last year, too?
Yes.
Okay.
And last year was the first year of this accountability system.
Okay. Next, minutes, regular meetings, September 9th. I went through them, I found no issues.
Move to approve. You didn't ask for that.
Yes, I would like a motion, sir.
Move to approve the minutes of the open session, September 9th.
Sound good?
For the discussion, powers in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
A zero.
Next, we have our first budget update of the year from Michael. Michael?
Great. So when you pack it this evening, there was the first September FY14 budget update, and as is the practice, the report is again summarized by our expenses and payroll. And I think this fiscal year is off to a good start. You know, it's still relatively early in the year, but certainly the schools and departments on the expense side of things are in the process of encumbering all expenses for the year, so they're still going through that process. That's why in September, you may see the available balance and so forth on the expense side of things higher than it would be as we kind of move through the next, you know, six weeks or so. As you may recall, we did prepay some special education tuitions with FY13 funds, so there is an additional, you know, budget flexibility or buffer as we start the fiscal, you know, 14 budget process, and, you know, that, you know, should provide us with the need should to maybe cover some anticipated expenses should the need arise. I'm still working with the special education department. I'm actually meeting with Dr. Flynn and her, her staff this week to thoroughly review all special education tuition expenses and transportation expenses for fiscal 14 and to make sure all those tuitions and transportation expenses are officially encumbered and sort of evaluate kind of where we are at with special education at this point in the year. So that process is, will take place, you know, thoroughly this week, and I've been working with some preliminary numbers with their department. So I do think the October report will clearly reflect all encumbered expenses for special education. In terms of payroll, I think, you know, as we reported last meeting, it has, it was a very busy summer, filling a lot of vacancies with paraprofessionals and teacher positions. As a result, I, there is a slightly greater savings in the teacher, you know, attrition and staff turnover that then was budgeted on the payroll side of things at this point in the year. As we reported last week as well, we've already had the need to appoint several long-term substitute positions to full, fill extended leave of absences, and I think, you know, there will be a need certainly to, to maybe fill a few more as we move throughout the school year. So it'll be important we pay close attention to those to, and to see what type of a budget impact that may result in the need to fill some long-term, you know, vacancies and extended leave of absences. You know, at this point, I do think with, you know, the payroll projections are certainly in line with what, what we have budgeted at this point in the year. There is a couple of lines that you may notice on the payroll report that are reflecting, you know, slight projected negative balance. The first of those is the general paraprofessional line item, and that was really a need for us to hire additional .5 kindergarten teacher, I'm sorry, kindergarten aide, general, general paraprofessional aide due to some enrollment and the need to, you know, the enrollment was certainly higher than anticipated. The second one you may notice there is reflected in the business office line. That is where the business office accountants and central office support staff are charged. And there has always historically been an offset that has been a part of that budget line item. There is in a business office accountant that does do several other duties, does involve scheduling and billing the use of our facilities. So in the past, we've looked to charge and offset a portion of our salary to the facility revolving account. There was a need to tap into some facility revolving account funds this year, certainly the bachelor parking lot. We did that, so we felt at this point in the year, we would take a conservative approach and not count on that offset, but as we monitor that account and revenue from going into that account, we know there could be a need to, we could have the flexibility and the ability to, to tap into that account for that offset. But at this point, we, it's not reflected in this report, which is the reason for, for the negative balance on the payroll report at this time. So I will say, some other comments I did want to make. I am working with Food Service, Chartwell's management team to develop a detailed budget for this year. I really think it's going to be very important that we monitor those, certainly the revenue and the expenses with Food Service right away and take a close look at their monthly balances. So I did have a meeting with Chartwell's officials and reviewed some of the templates that I would like to see them work with me on, and they are working on that this week. I will meet with them early next week to see where they're at so we can be prepared to really assess and analyze that at the close of September. But what I've asked them to do is prepare a budget that develops some, some benchmark numbers each month of what would be a break-even program. So, you know, should we be operating at a self-supported break-even program each month? These were the benchmarks that, you know, we would need to be at. And then I, I would like to match up our actuals at the end of each month to see where in line with the break-even or, or what side we're coming on in terms of where we're at each month. So I think that's something I'd like to implement this year to closely monitor the food service program. You know, we certainly have, because of the, certainly the mail counts at each school are, you know, were down last year, we have made the adjustments to the hours of the food service workers. Couple of positions were actually not filled, so we have, you know, we'll be experiencing some labor cost savings on that and to help, to help the food service program as well. So, so that's some other, other initiatives that are going on in terms of what will have a budget impact this year. And, you know, overall, I think, I think we're off to, you know, a pretty good start as we, we look at fiscal 14, September. So entertaining questions at this time?
Anybody have any questions?
Okay.
Looks good to me.
No.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay, Kathy, anything on staffing?
Not at this time.
Is in donations?
Not at this time.
Okay. Subcommittee update. Tomorrow's an athletic subcommittee meeting, and then the rest of them are to be TBD, except there's a finance planning team meeting, except we have that at September 20th. Is that...
Are you looking at the minutes, Mel?
That's the one you had last Friday, Mel.
Yeah.
We have a policy, Subcommittee September 25th?
You're looking at last...
Okay. I was looking at the minutes. Okay. So what, we have policy on the 25th, which is Wednesday. That's our, and we have SSBC tomorrow night, and we have athletic sub tomorrow.
And NOR Cam?
Pardon me?
NOR Cam?
NOR Cam.
The 26th?
Yeah. At some point, we don't have to do it tonight. I'd like to talk about, if anybody else would like to volunteer for NOR Cam, I have too many, I'm on too many different subcommittees, I think, and I just don't have the time for that one, so, but we can talk about it in a future meeting.
Nominate Karen.
Yeah. And the finance planning team, there's really not much to update on. I, I mean, we went over the school project, and it's just so early in the year.
It's so early in the year.
You can't really, there's no comment really on any of the revenues that are in or anything because it's just so early. The only difference this year, the state's now paying on a monthly basis rather than a quarterly basis, which helps the town and the schools with cash flow.
Oh, we took a look at the warrant for the town meeting?
Right, and there's really not...
We have nothing on that.
No, we have nothing for the schools on there.
We have nothing.
Nothing.
No.
No.
Last Wednesday, I went to the annual meeting of the suburban corporation.
Oh, yeah.
And the basic thing that we covered really was, after building new offices, was to look at the development of a new position paper, 2013 position paper. And I have copies of the last one for 2012. And what I'd like to have everybody do is just kind of look at it and conclude whether they have anything they'd like to change or anything they'd like to add. You get comments back to me, I'll move them around to the committee for consideration.
So this is last year's, and they're going to...
This is last year, so there'll be a new one.
But they're going to base it on last year's?
Well, it's that, and the, there was some discussion about a little bit of reformatting and that kind of thing, but they, but basically to look at where we can, can get the most effect to, to assist our communities.
Okay.
Thanks.
Great. Administrative report?
None.
Correspondence, none?
No.
Okay. Anything else? At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Oops.
I was just going to say the future business, the, the next meeting is the town meeting?
Right.
So we made it 6:30 in the library.
Okay.
And then the meeting after that is a Tuesday because of the holiday.
Right, it's Tuesday, it's a holiday.
So we'll be here on a Tuesday night, October 15th.
Right.
It's not going to conflict with...
I was just looking...
Secondary school building, right?
No.
Okay.
Oh.
It could.
On the 15th of October?
It may.
Timing will be different. Once, all right, Kathy.
I know.
It'll be 4:30 anyway. I don't, I don't think that'll be a problem.
SSBC is the 8th.
It is the 8th, okay.
And the 22nd.
Okay, all right.
I think I had a motion to adjourn.
Sorry.
Did Cliff make a motion to adjourn?
He did.
Second, by Janine. Powers in favor?
Aye.
Good night.